Madam Clerk, would you please call the row for our public hearing?
Councilman Striplin. Councilman Wood. Councilman Argo.
Here.
Councilman Miller. Councilman Reniger.
Here.
Councilman Bowles.
Here.
Councilman Fink.
Here.
Having a quorum, I now call to order our public hearing, and we have one item on the agenda tonight, resolution to grant a lounge retail liquor class-two package store license to Rodha LLC, Carticke, and Cal Penaban Patel doing business as Hangover Package. So this is a public hearing, and I would ask if anyone wants to speak in favor of this resolution, that you raise your hand. When recognized, come down to the podium, state your name and address, and then present your comments to us. Ms. Finnegan. Brad, or...
(inaudible).
Okay, thank you, Ms. Finnegan. Does anyone want to speak in favor of this resolution? Okay, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak against this resolution? Anyone would like to speak against? Okay, seeing none, I can hear it from up here. Seeing none, this item will appear on our regular agenda this evening. Do I hear a motion to adjourn the public hearing?
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Argo, second?
Seconded by Councilman Reniger.
Seconded by Councilman Reniger. All in favor of adjourning the motion to adjourn the public hearing signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Chair votes aye, and we are now out of the public hearing. We now will turn to our regular city council agenda. Pledge of allegiance followed by the invocation to be given by Councilman Argo.
(inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which sustains one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. About me, please. Loving heavenly Father, Lord, we thank you for the gift of this beautiful day. We thank you for the opportunities that you have provided us today to be compassionate and lovings to each other and to our family. Lord, we also ask a special blessing on those that are in the Boone Chapel community, Lord, as they mourn the lost lives over the weekend. Lord, we also know that we're going to have storms like that in our lives, and, Lord, I pray that not only will your peace and comfort be upon those families and those that love them, and, Lord, I ask that that peace be granted to us as well as we deal with storms. Lord, we also ask a special blessing on all those that are here this evening as we conduct the business of the city. Lord, we ask that you guard our hearts and our eyes and our tongues, and, Lord, that we pray that what we do here tonight will be pleasing to you and beneficial to those that we serve. And, Lord, we also ask a special blessing on all of those around the globe that are fighting on behalf of us so that we can be here tonight. Lord, keep them strong, keep their families strong, and, Lord, allow them to return home to their families. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the row?
Councilman Striplin.
Here.
Councilman Wood.
Here.
Councilman Argo.
Here.
Councilman Miller.
Here.
Councilman Reniger.
Here.
Councilman...
Here.
Councilman Fink.
Here.
Seeing a quorum, I now call this meeting of the Prattville City Council to order. Does it sound really loud out there?
(inaudible).
It sounds great, because we're getting a lot more feedback than usual. So, the character trait of this month is humility, recognizing my abilities and limitations. The next item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes. Gentlemen, these were distributed as usual electronically, and this is our meeting of April 5th. Is there any... Can I have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Reniger. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Fink. Any further discussion on this motion? All in favor of the motion to approve the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Chair votes aye, and the minutes are approved. We now are on the portion of the agenda where we hear from the public if there's anyone who wants to approach the podium and make comments to the council, whether or not it has to do with an item on the agenda. This is the time. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address us tonight? Okay, we will now move to the mayor's report.
Thank you. One thing I want to say, thank you for saying the prayer for all the families who have... who went through last Friday night, Saturday morning, and please remember the Holland family some more in your prayers, and also Ms. Tooney and her family. She is in the Birmingham Hospital up here in intensive care, and so she needs our prayers also. One thing I do want to talk about is the great work that our fire department did out in that area. We had several of our firefighters, including interim chief Brown, who lives in that area, and he was one of the first people on the scenes, and he actually had to live through all that. So it, to me, is a lot more than just standing up here and talking about it when you absolutely have to live through something like that. But with Chief Brown being there first on the scene, he was able to do a yeoman's job up there, pulling together all the resources and bringing in some of the Prattville resources to help out in that area. We also had a lot of... There was a lot of help done by the Prattville Police Department. Chief Huggins, interim chief Huggins, was also able to be in contact, and we were able to assist in that area through both our fire and police department. One other area I want to talk about also is through Sergeant Graves and Investigator Frith, they have been able to find some training that we need. They have teamed up with five agencies that will eventually come up between a savings of between $2,500 and $6,500 for the city of Prattville, which that's also does not include travel or food and so forth. So I want to tip our hat to those people, because they have really been looking forward to every dime and penny that we have out there trying to cut our expenses and pull our city back together. One other thing I want to talk about also is that tonight on our agenda, we have a contract from Southern Link that we did some renegotiating with. Will actually come up and save us approximately $10,000. The writing's a $10,000 credit for the rest of the year, and so I'd really appreciate if you guys would go ahead and pass that tonight, and we can move forward with that. Next week, I'm sorry, next council meeting, I'm hoping that I will have another contract that I've been working on, trying to renegotiate on, and hopefully show us another $7,000 savings on that one. And so hopefully we should see that on our next council agenda, which those two alone, if anybody's math, I'm certain has added up to $17,000. One of the events that we had this weekend was Bark in the Park, where it was cold but wet. Councilman Bowles was there, I was there, and a couple of other people, and I don't know if anybody noticed I was limping tonight, but I actually had a little foot damage doing that, but I'm surviving it pretty well. But it was a pretty good success. I think we had more people than we did last year, and I'd say that the contributions were better than anticipated, so it did... It worked out really well. One bit of good news that I do have for us also is a $3.1 million bridge loan that we had taken out. We were able to pay that off yesterday. I guess the bad news on our agenda, we do have a $1.1 million bridge loan that we have to take out for our May, but if you guys will move forward with that, we do need that. That is time sensitive, so I do need to have that approved tonight if we want to make our obligations. Let's see. The other thing I do, you guys will be noticing if you've been on the city website, is our, what we call our U-Town. Our webmaster, Teresa Lee, has worked very, very hard on that. It's our mobile app. It was... She was able to pick it up at one of the government webmasters conference last September. Prattville was chosen in October, one of the few in the nation that has this. This app is zero cost to the city. I am technically challenged. Dr. Tom Miller might know a little bit more about that, but in the very near future, I'm planning on buying me some up-to-date equipment, so I'll be doing... Going through a learning process on that also. But we were the first city in the nation to have this turned on for us. Testing began in November, ran through March, anyway, it was released April the 7th, but has some new feeds, Twitter, Facebook, website, press releases, it's almost anything you can think of. If you need no upcoming events or holiday information, garbage schedules, historic walking tours, parade routes, quite a bit of public notices, so I understand, I think Councilman Ray Bowles also has some of the high-tech equipment. I'm sorry?
(inaudible).
Oh, three, oh, okay. All I can say is it's hard to hide money, but that's okay, too. But anyway, besides that, if any questions from the council?
Any questions? Councilman Bowles.
How is the foot doing?
My heel is getting better.
I'm the one who caused that, so sorry about that, bud.
Well, it's all for a good cause, you know, it's for our humane society who, as all agencies, you know, the price of fuel and food and just, you know, everything in general, we're, you know, we're all coming together, I think, as a community to try to pull together there and help out all of our different agencies, and I really have seen where Prattville has pulled more and more together, you know. It's... And I don't think that's very uncommon as a nation whenever things need to... When you need to tighten your belt and pull together, I see the Americans and especially the city of Prattville pull together a lot more than other nations have, and I think that is what has really made the city of Prattville and the United States great.
Any other questions for the mayor? So did I understand it that each of you took a turn in the Dunkin' booth?
Yes.
And...
I was... I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm not quite sure how to phrase this. I should just say, who raised the most money?
It was obviously I, because I was also juggling at the time, so I was able to bring more people in, and they came more for the...
You can sit down. All right, we now come to the agenda item, a report from the council on any special committees. Councilman Striplin?
No.
Councilman Wood?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess I'm going to be reporting as a one-man committee, but I did pass information around to each of you, and that way everybody got the same information concerning item resolution number one, request for lounge retail liquor class. I have given you items to consider, one through six, and I will leave all those items with you for your consideration upon voting on this item when that time comes. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Wood. Councilman Argo?
Yes, Mr. President. Members of the council, the wastewater and sanitation committee met yesterday evening with the mayor. We also had an opportunity to talk about a number of the issues that are facing the wastewater and sanitation departments, such as infrastructure, upgrades, personnel, and so forth. We also met with a company that does private management of those types of facilities. It was just an information gathering meeting. It was not to discuss anything other than just to find out what it is that they do and how they do it so that we could better understand the options as we go forward, trying to figure out how we're going to handle those challenges. I do think that the committee was interested in the options we discussed, and I think that at a meeting very... In the near future, that we will have a recommendation to the council to look at some possible further study of those options so that we might be able to put together a long-range plan of how we're going to deal with those challenges. So I look forward to working with the council in dealing with those issues. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Councilman Reniger?
Yes, sir. Since our last council meeting, the fire committee met. We had a rather thorough and intense meeting for about two hours and put a lot of things on the table and fleshed out a lot of things. You will find on your agenda two items coming from the fire department. I would appreciate if you would suspend the rules and pass these. One is to establish an ambulance billing and collection policy. Right now, we don't have an effective one, and we need to establish that. The other one is to purchase a vehicle, and it's fully funded through a grant that we've... That the fire chief has negotiated and we can get and be at no cost to the city. And with that, I'll pass it on to Councilman Bowles.
Thank you. Councilman Bowles?
Yes, sir. We had a building committee. It was about trying to see if we could take one person off the RIF program, and I think everybody was under the same idea that it would be prudent to leave it as is, and so we decided to leave it as is. Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Fink?
Yes, I just wanted to comment for each of you. On item number eight on our agenda tonight, I'm going to actually ask that we hold that until the next meeting. I'm going to call a judicial committee meeting, of which I chair, with Councilman Argo and Councilman Striplin, and get the... Get Judge Colley and our magistrate involved to kind of go through that with us and explain what we're doing with that implementation, and then we'll be able to make a recommendation to the council. So I give that to the rest of the council as well.
Thank you. We'll now move into our regular agenda. The first item is a resolution to grant a retail lounge retail liquor class-two package store license to Rodha LLC, Carticke, and Cal Penaban Patel doing business as Hangover Package. This item was the subject of our public hearing earlier this evening. Councilman Wood, would you introduce this resolution, please?
Resolution to grant lounge retail liquor class-two package store license to Carticke and Cal Penaban Patel. Whereas Rodha LLC, Carticke owner, and Cal Penaban member, Patel doing business as Hangover Package, has obtained a business located at 104B Highway 82 bypass East Prattville, Alabama 36067, which is intended to be a package store, and whereas the owner of said business has applied for a lounge retail liquor class-two package store license, and where said license would be a new application, and where said application has been investigated by the city of Prattville Police Department and referred to the city council public safety committee, and therefore be resolved that the city council of the city of Prattville, Alabama hereby approves the issuance of a lounge retail liquor class-two package store license to Rodha LLC, Carticke, and Cal Penaban Patel doing business as Hangover Package 104B Highway 82 bypass East Prattville, Alabama. Mr. Chair, I so move for consideration.
Moved by Councilman Wood. Is there a second? Is there a second? This resolution... This motion dies for lack of a second. Item number two is a resolution, request to release funds to purchase a building and supplies for the recycling center on Ridgewood Road. This item was held from our April 5th council meeting. Is there any further discussion on this resolution? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Chair votes aye, and this resolution passes by a vote of seven to zero. Item number three is a resolution to adjust the fiscal year 2011 general operating fund budget. This resolution also held from our April 5th meeting. Is there any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay.
Nay.
Chair votes aye, and this resolution passes by a vote of five to one. All right, Councilman Wood has stepped out. I'm sorry. Item number three... I'm sorry, item number four is to amend Chapter 2, Article 2, Division 2, Rules of Order and Procedure, Section 2-51, Order of Business. This ordinance was also held from our April 5th meeting. Is there any further discussion on this ordinance? Councilman Argo?
Yes, sir. Council members, you'll recall at our last meeting, I asked that these lay over for two weeks to give everyone an opportunity to read them and to submit any other changes that they would like to see made. I do have a couple of changes that I would like to ask. Mr. President, do you want me to... There are one, two, three, three changes on this ordinance. Do you want me to do them all at one time or do them individually?
I think it'd be fine to do them all as amendments, as a package.
Okay. My first, or my amendment to these ordinances on Section 7, where it says, "The council shall receive a report from the finance director or his designee on the status of city finances." After the word "his," I would like to insert "or her." No offense to Mr. Mosley, but he may not always be our finance director, and if there is a lady in his position, then we certainly don't want to insult her by calling her "his," so we will... I make that motion to insert after "his" or "her." In Section 9, after the one, two, third sentence at the end where it says, "Then five minutes," the last sentence says, "The presiding officer may reduce the comment period when necessary." I would like to add "after" "may reduce." I would like to add "or increase" the comment period when necessary. There may be times where we'll have people who will want to come and make presentations to the council, and it may require more than five minutes, and I wouldn't want to have the rules to prohibit us to be able to do that. And then the last suggested change would be on Section 21, the new Section 21. The rules of the council may be temporarily suspended by a vote of two-thirds of the members present. That is significantly and appropriately covered in Section 20, so I make a motion that we delete Section 21 in its entirety. Mr. President, I make that motion.
Can I ask that you consider adding a renumbering of...
I'm sorry, I meant to say, after we delete Section 21, we would renumber the subsequent sections accordingly. I apologize.
Okay, you've heard the motion to make the amendments, basically Section 7, the finance director or his or her designee. Section 9, the presiding officer may reduce or increase the comment period when necessary. Deletion of Section 21, and then renumbering of 22 through 27 to accommodate the deletion of 21. So is there a second on the motion to amend this item?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Fink. Any discussion on the motion to amend? All in favor of the motion to amend signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Chair votes aye, and the motion to amend passes by a vote of seven to zero. The amended ordinance is now properly before us. Is there any further discussion on the amended ordinance? Councilman Reniger?
Yes, sir. I'd like to commend Councilman Argo on an outstanding job of putting this together for us. It's obviously very complete, and I think we can move forward more efficiently by adopting it.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the amended ordinance? Councilman Argo?
Yes, sir. First of all, thank you to Councilman Reniger for those kind remarks. I appreciate that. The rules of order and procedure have always been a collective effort by the council, but I do appreciate all of the suggestions and the submitted changes from each of you that allowed this to be a fairly easy work. And I know this is going to sound strange coming from me. Well, maybe it won't sound strange coming from me, because a lot of things coming from me don't sound strange. But I do question breaking up the public comment period at the beginning and then having public comment at the end. I've always been a strong believer in letting people have their comments at the beginning of the meeting, because I've seen other bodies use moving comment to the end of the agenda as a way of thinning people out and wearing them down so they go home and they don't stay, because meetings run long sometimes. So I do have some concern about that, so I just... I'm not asking to make a change. I'm just asking the council to be aware of that, that that has often been used by other bodies to prohibit and to push people away from speaking, and I think the fact that we allow people to speak at the beginning of the meeting on any issue is one of the greatest attributes of the Prattville City Council, and I just want us to be careful in that. Other than that, Mr. President, I appreciate the opportunity to speak.
Any further discussion on the amended ordinance? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Chair votes aye, and the amended ordinance passes by a vote of seven to zero. Item number five is a resolution to amend Resolution Book 2008-A, page 49, to provide procedure and criteria for the establishment of council meetings, agenda and agenda packet. This resolution was also held from our April 5th meeting. Is there any further discussion on this resolution? All in favor of this resolution signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Chair votes aye, and this resolution passes by a vote of seven to zero. Item number six is a resolution, request to release funds to purchase a 2011 Dodge 2500 truck off of state contract from Ben Atkinson Motors and Lighting, radio equipment, lettering, and decals. Councilman Reniger, can you introduce this resolution, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas the city of Prattville Fire Department has a need to purchase one 2011 Dodge 2500 truck, and whereas said truck is available off the current state contract at a cost of $32,218, and whereas the required lettering is available from Vinyl Tech at a cost of $1,797.25, and whereas the lighting and radio equipment is available from Comserve Communications at a cost of $4,984.75, now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Prattville that funds in the amount not to exceed $39,000 are hereby approved and appropriated and are to be paid from the State of Alabama Homeland Security Grant Fund. Mr. Chair, I so move.
Moved by Councilman Reniger. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Bowles. By point of order, even though this is grant money, it's not a budgeted item, so unless there's a suspension of the rules, it will hold until our next meeting.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Fink. Is there a second on the motion to suspend the rules?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Striplin. Any discussion on the motion to suspend the rules? All in favor of the motion to suspend the rules signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Chair votes aye, and the rules are suspended by a vote of seven to zero, and this resolution is properly before us. Is there any further discussion on this resolution? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Chair votes aye, and this resolution passes by a vote of seven to zero. Item number seven is a resolution to authorize the mayor to enter into an agreement with Southern Link through September 30th, 2011. Councilman Bowles, can you introduce this resolution, please?
Whereas the city of Prattville currently authorizes... Currently utilizes the mobile phone service provided by Southern Link of... Off the current state contract, and whereas Southern Link has offered the city a $10,000 credit in return of continuance of the service through September 30th, 2011, and whereas Southern Link's state contract expires September 30th, 2011, now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the city of Prattville does hereby authorize the mayor to enter into an agreement with Southern Link through September 30th, 2011. Be it further resolved that the funds are hereby approved and appropriated and are to be paid from the information technology radio line item. I so move.
Moved by Councilman Bowles. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilman Argo. By point of order, I understand this one also holds until our next meeting, because it's... Although it's budgeted, it is a little bit different. We're getting a credit, but anyway, we suspend the rules in order to... Abundance of caution in order to consider it.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Argo to suspend the rules. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Wood. Any discussion on the motion to suspend the rules? All in favor of the motion to suspend the rules signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Chair votes aye, and the rules are suspended. This resolution is now properly before us. Is there any further discussion on this resolution? Councilman Striplin?
The wording, be it further resolved that the funds are hereby approved and appropriated and are to be paid from the information technology radio line item. I thought we were receiving $10,000.
That's a good point. Mr. Mayor?
That is a good point, but actually, the way the whole contract is, we're reducing the contract, and then after we reduce it, then we have to pay it. So that's supposed to be the proper verbiage there. But we are reducing, but... to be the proper verbiage there. But we are reducing, but after we reduce it ten thousand, we still have a balance due.
Councilman Striplin, is that?
It's understandable, but that's not what it says.
Councilman Wood?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I underline those same wording right there. My concern is, I want to make sure I'm clear on this. We're getting the credit, and as Councilman Striplin stated, it says, "Be it resolved that funds are hereby approved." If we're going to include that, because that is rather confusing, shouldn't that be in an amount to match that credit amount there?
Mayor?
Actually, with this particular type of contract, there's a possibility there's not a, an exact amount, because one good example I can give you, that we have actually turned off some held-held units, and there's a possibility we might turn off some more, or there might need, a need to add another unit on. So, there's, there's not a true down-to-the-penny dollar amount on this until the end of the contract.
Is that all, Councilman Wood? Okay. Councilman Argo?
Yes, sir. I understand exactly what Councilman Striplin and Councilman Wood are saying, but if you read the resolution the way it is written, the resolution is to authorize the mayor to enter into an agreement with Southern Link through September thirtieth, which assumes we're going to be paying for that service. In the body of the resolution, it says, "We will receive a ten thousand dollar credit," which basically means we're going to owe them for the next six months. They're going to reduce that total cost by ten thousand, so that's why we're going to have to pay money out of the fund for those six months. They're just going to reduce it by ten thousand. It's written funny, but it is correct, in my opinion.
Thank you, Councilman Argo. Anything from this end of the dice? Councilman Striplin?
Not to dispute the comment, but it seems to imply that whereas Southern Link has offered the city a ten thousand dollar credit in return of continuation of the service, it would seem that we already have a contract. Is that correct or incorrect?
Mayor?
That is correct. We, at the beginning, at the beginning of the budget, we went into a contract with them off of the state bid list, signed the contract, and then through negotiations, I've been able to reduce it by ten thousand dollars. And, but we do have a contract right now with them. What I'm trying to do is amend that contract to reduce it by ten thousand.
You're saving money, is what you're saying.
Yes, sir. That is, if the council will allow me to.
Any further discussion on this resolution?
Yes, sir.
Councilman Renninger?
Since you asked for a comment from this side of the dice, would seem to me that we could amend Line Twenty-four to simply read, "Be it further resolved that remaining funds are hereby approved and appropriated and are to be paid from the information technology radio line item." That would cover the ten thousand dollar credit and cover whatever we owe for the next six months under this contract. I'd like to have a legal opinion on that.
I've been trying to mull how I would accomplish what y'all are arguing over or discussing.
We're engaging in a healthy--
Engaging in healthy discussion and arguing. I'd have to give that some thought. I don't--
This is rather confusing. I don't know if this will work, but I think it will. Councilman Renninger mentioned amending Line Twenty-four. I think if we just take Twenty-four, Twenty-five, and Twenty-six out of this resolution, that may clear it up. And just stop, where it says, "Mayor to enter into an agreement with Southern Link through September thirtieth, Two Thousand and Eleven." Let him negotiate whatever he wants to negotiate.
All right. Is there a contract that already says we're supposed to pay so much per month, and it'll end on September thirtieth?
Not specifically per month, but per unit. It'll depend on what devices that we have in activation.
And we pay monthly?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Can, can I make a suggestion? This one is, is a little bit muddier, and it's getting more or less muddy the more we discuss it. Would the council consider holding it if that time-wise is not too big of a problem, and we can work the appropriate language out and perhaps amend it on our, when we revisit it at our next meeting?
Well, as being an invited guest here, I would be, that sounds fine to me.
But the timeframe would, to delay it for, till our next meeting would not be?
Correct. This is not a time-sensitive item. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chair? Motion to hold this resolution until our next scheduled meeting by Councilman Renninger, seconded by Councilman Fink. Is there any discussion on the motion to hold? All in favor of the motion to hold signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Chair votes aye, and this one will help, hold until our next regularly scheduled meeting. The next item is, number eight, is an ordinance to implement Code of Alabama, Nineteen Seventy-Five as amended, Section Eleven dash forty-seven dash seven point one, additional court costs and fees on certain municipal cases authorized, distribution of funds for jails or court complex. Councilman Fink, can you introduce this ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. Be it ordained that pursuant to Section Eleven dash forty-seven dash seven point one, Code of Alabama, Nineteen Seventy-Five as amended, additional court costs of twenty-one dollars and fifty cents should apply to traffic cases, and twenty-three dollars should apply to non-traffic cases. This cost is in addition to all court costs currently assessed as prescribed under the Code of Alabama, Nineteen Seventy-Five as amended, or Code of ordinances of the City of Prattville. This ordinance shall go into effect upon the passage and publication as required by law. Mr. President, I so move.
Moved by Councilman Fink. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Wood, and I believe this one holds since it's an ordinance unless we suspend the rules, so. Is there a, okay. Item number nine, a resolution to authorize the mayor to enter into an agreement with Alabama Department of Transportation for sanitary sewer improvements associated with the widening of U.S. Highway Eighty-two at Gen Shop Hill Road. Councilman Striplin, can you introduce this resolution, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas the Alabama Department of Transportation is desirous of widening U.S. Eighty-two from State Road Fourteen to State Road Two-O-Six in the City of Prattville, and whereas said construction will include work at the intersection of U.S. Eighty-two at Gen Shop Hill Road, and whereas said construction will impact the City of Prattville's sanitary sewer line at this intersection, and whereas the Alabama Department of Transportation is proposing to perform work on the city's sanitary sewer line at this location, and whereas this work will be performed at no cost to the City of Prattville. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville, Alabama, as follows: One, that the city enters into an agreement or agreements with the State of Alabama acting by and through the Alabama Department of Transportation; For agreements for utility work on Project NH dash zero 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 six, parentheses, five thirty-five, close parenthesis, U.S. Eighty-two widening from State Road Fourteen to State Road Two-O-Six. Which agreement is before this council? Number two, that the agreements be executed by the name, in the name of the city by its mayor for and on its behalf; and three, that the agreements be attested by the city clerk and the seal of the city affixed thereto. Be it further resolved that upon the completion of the execution of these agreements by all parties, that a copy of such agreements be kept and filed by the city clerk. So moved.
Moved by Councilman Striplin. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Argo. Is there any discussion on this resolution? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Chair votes aye, and this resolution passes by a vote of seven to zero. Item number ten is a resolution to submit municipal waste pollution prevention program report to the Alabama Department of Environmental Management. Councilman Argo, can you introduce this item, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Whereas the City of Prattville operates wastewater treatment facilities, and whereas it is necessary for the City of Prattville to implement a municipal wastewater pollution prevention program as directed by law, and whereas Rick Teague, interim superintendent of the wastewater department, has prepared the municipal water pollution prevention annual report, now therefore be it resolved that the City of Prattville does hereby acknowledge that the City Council has reviewed and submits the municipal wastewater prevention program report for the City of Prattville, and that the City of Prattville, through its employees and the wastewater treatment department, shall continue to maintain the diligent monitoring of the affluent from the wastewater system, and shall continue to treat the wastewater affluent in the same manner as they have in the past, in accordance with all federal and state regulations. It is further resolved that the city will continue the training programs as recommended by the superintendent of the wastewater department and as required by all applicable state and federal government regulatory agencies. Mr. President, I so move.
Moved by Councilman Argo. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Striplin. Any discussion on this resolution? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Chair votes aye, and this resolution passes by a vote of seven to zero. Item number eleven is an ordinance petition for annexation of Old Ridge Road between River Chase North and Pendlebrook Subdivision. Councilman Argo, can you introduce this ordinance, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Prattville, Alabama, that the City of Prattville is a city with a population of over six thousand inhabitants located in the state of Alabama, and that it has been presented by petition by all owners of property located and contained which are contiguous to the corporate limits of the City of Prattville as they are now situated, and that the property described in the petition sought to be annexed is as described in Attachment A and shown in Attachment B, that said property does not lie within the corporate limits of any other municipality, and that all owners are defined by Eleven dash forty-two dash twenty, Code of Alabama, Nineteen Seventy-Five as amended, have executed said petition requesting the property be annexed into the City of Prattville, that the City of Prattville finds that it is to the best interest of the City of Prattville and its inhabitants to annex said property, and that the City Council of the City of Prattville finds that the petition has met all requirements of Title Eleven dash forty-two dash twenty through Eleven dash forty-two dash twenty-three, Code of Alabama, Nineteen Seventy-Five as amended. Be it further ordained that the City Council of the City of Prattville, Alabama, that the corporate limits of the City of Prattville be extended and rearranged so as to embrace and include the following property as described in Attachment A and shown in Attachment B, and that which property shall become a part of the corporate area of Prattville, Alabama, upon passage and publication of this ordinance as required by law. Be it further ordained that the extension of sewer lines in the newly annexed area shall not be provided until such time as it becomes economically feasible for the city to provide same. Be it further ordained that a copy of the petition be filed in the office of the Judge of Probate of Otoga County, Alabama, and that this ordinance be published in the Prattville Progress of Otoga County, Alabama. Mr. President, I so move.
Moved by Councilman Argo. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Fink. By point of order, this ordinance will hold until our next regularly scheduled meeting. Item number twelve is a resolution petition for de-annexation of intersection of Interstate Sixty-five and Cobbs Ford Road. Councilman Bowles, can you introduce this item, please?
Whereas I Sixty-five Lands LLC is owned, is the owner of the following descriptive property as shown in Exhibit A. Whereas I Sixty-five Lands LLC desires to develop the same end, whereas any development will require a sanitation sewer connection, and whereas the City of Prattville is unable to provide sanitation sewer to the property without boring under the interstate at great expense to the property owner, and whereas the City Council, the City Council of the City of Prattville determines pursuit to Section Eleven dash forty-two dash two hundred, Code of Alabama, Nineteen Seventy-Five as amended, that the public good requires that it is, corporate limits be reduced, and the boundaries therefore be reestablished, and whereas the reestablished boundaries of the City of Prattville are shown on Exhibit B, now therefore be it resolved that the corporate limits of the City of Prattville shall be reduced by the description contained in Exhibit A, and the boundaries therefore reestablished in the map attached to Exhibit B. Be it further resolved that the mayor is hereby authorized to sign any and all documents required to carry out the intention of this resolution. Be it further resolved that the mayor shall certify a copy of the resolution together with I Sixty-five Land LLC. I so move.
Moved by Councilman Bowles. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Fink. Is there any discussion on this resolution?
I would like to hold this for two weeks.
Motion to hold for two weeks?
Motion to hold, please.
Councilman Bowles has made a motion to hold this item for two weeks. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Striplin. Any discussion on the motion to hold?
Yes, sir. I'd like to know why we're going to hold it. Why don't we just act on it and move on?
Councilman Renninger, I spoke with Mr. Dorsey, and we are, in fact, waiting on a legal description. I thought we had both descriptions, what will be contained in Exhibit A and Exhibit B, but the surveyor has not completed Exhibit B, which is the map that has to be attached.
Was that it, Councilman Renninger? Any other discussion on the motion to hold? Okay. All in favor of the motion to hold signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Chair votes aye, and this item will hold until our next council meeting. Item number thirteen is a resolution to authorize the issuance, execution, sale, and delivery of a million dollars principal amount. General obligation noted the City of Prattville and the payment thereof. Councilman Renninger, can you introduce this item, please?
Be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville, Alabama, and Prince, the municipality, as follows: Section One, Definitions. Code shall mean the Internal Revenue Code of Nineteen Eighty-Six as amended. B, refunded obligations shall mean that portion of the principal of and interest of the following series of warrants of the municipality due on May second, Two Thousand and Eleven. Nineteen thousand, eight hundred and seventy, no, nineteen, nineteen million? Okay. Nineteen million, eight hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars general obligation economic development improvement warrants. Series Two Thousand and Six A dated April the first, Two Thousand and Six. One million, five hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars general obligation warrant. Series Two Thousand and Six dated April the first, Two Thousand and Six. Nine million dollars general obligation economic development improvement warrant. Series Two Thousand and Six B dated September the first, Two Thousand and Six, and fourteen million, nine hundred, twenty thousand dollars general obligation economic development improvement warrant. Series Two Thousand and Seven dated December the first, Two Thousand and Seven. Tax certificate in agreement shall mean the tax certificate in agreement dated the date of delivery of the note delivered by the municipality with respect thereto. Notes shall have the meaning assigned in Section Two, Subparagraph A. Section Two, Findings and Representations. The municipality by and through its governing body does hereby find, determine, represent, and warrant as follows: The municipality has heretofore issued the refunded obligations pursuant to, and in full compliance with the laws and constitution of the State of Alabama, including without limitation, limitation, excuse me, Amendment Number Seven Seven Two to the Constitution of the Alabama, Constitution of Alabama of Nineteen Oh One as amended, now codified as Section Ninety-four Point Zero One of the Official--
Mr. President, point of order? Point of order, Councilman Argo.
I'm sure Mr. Renninger would like to read all seven pages of this, but I really think that, that he's doing so out of an obligation to us and not really because it needs to be done. So, I'm going to ask, Mr. President, that Mr. Renninger do as we have done in the past, and that's read the title, and let's, let's save his voice for some other resolutions.
Thank you, Councilman Argo. I'll leave that to Councilman Reneger's discretion.
Yeah, I was trying to figure out how to pronounce that word anyway. That'd be fine. So moved.
Moved by Councilman Reneger. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Argo. Is there any discussion on this resolution? All in favor of this resolution signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Chair votes aye, and this resolution passes by a vote of seven to zero. Item number 14 is a resolution to authorize the release of funds. Oh, David, did I need to suspend the rules on that one?
Yes.
Yes, I'm sorry. Before we go, okay. And I need a motion to bring it back before us. Councilman Fink has made such a motion?
Yes.
Seconded by Councilman Bowles. Is there any discussion on the motion to bring this back before us? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Chair votes aye, and this motion is back before us. It will automatically hold for two weeks unless there is a motion to suspend the rules.
So moved.
Motion to suspend the rules by Councilman Reneger. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Fink. Any discussion on the motion to suspend the rules? All in favor of the motion to suspend the rule signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Chair votes aye, and the rules are suspended. This resolution is properly before us, and we can now have a vote. All in favor, I'm sorry, any further discussion? All in favor of this resolution signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Chair votes aye, and this resolution passes again by a vote of seven to zero, and I do apologize for that. Item number 14, a resolution to authorize the release of funds to build housing for the information technology equipment. Councilman Wood, can you introduce this resolution, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Whereas the City of Prattville Information Technology Department is being relocated to the upstairs of the annex, and whereas there is need for housing within the annex to properly house the sensitive equipment required for city functions, and whereas the following appropriations are needed in order to construct said housing. Housing, four seventy-five, four hundred and seventy-five dollars. Electric, two hundred and fifty dollars. HVAC, five thousand, three hundred dollars. Roof penetration for HVAC, three hundred dollars. Rewinding data lines, four thousand, three hundred, sixty-three dollars, seventy-five cents. Shelving, five hundred dollars. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville, funds in amount not to exceed eleven thousand, two hundred dollars are hereby appropriated, and funds are to be paid from the information technology equipment maintenance line item. Mr. President, I so move.
Moved by Councilman Wood. Is there a second?
Second to motion.
Seconded by Councilman Reneger. By point of order, this resolution will hold for two weeks unless there's a motion to suspend the rules. Motion to suspend the rules by Councilman Bowles. Is there a second? Okay, the motion to suspend the rules dies for lack of a second. Item number 15 is a resolution to appoint Wayne Moody to the Prattville Solid Waste Disposal Authority. Councilman Fink, can you introduce this resolution, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas a vacancy currently exists on the Prattville Solid Waste Disposal Authority due to the term expiration of John Cooper, and whereas it is the desire of the Prattville City Council to fill that vacancy to ensure the continuity of the board's operation, now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville, Alabama, that Wayne Mooney is hereby appointed to fill the vacancy effective immediately, and said term will expire on July 15, 2014, or until his successor is duly qualified and appointed. I so move, Mr. President.
Moved by Councilman Fink. Is there a second?
Second to motion.
Seconded by Councilman Argo. Is there any discussion on this resolution? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Chair votes aye, and this resolution passes by a vote of seven to zero. Item number 16, a resolution to appoint Randy Grissette to the Industrial Development Board. Councilman Striplin, can you introduce this resolution, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas a vacancy currently exists on the Industrial Development Board due to the term expiration of Max Alexander, and whereas it is the desire of the City of Prattville to ensure the continuity of the board's operation, now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville, Alabama, that Randy Grissette is hereby appointed to said term, and said term will expire on March the 2nd, 2017, or until his successor is duly qualified and appointed. So moved, sir.
Moved by Councilman Striplin. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Fink. Any discussion on this resolution? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Chair votes aye, and this resolution passes by a vote of seven to zero. Item number 17 is a resolution to reappoint Greg Gillon to the Prattville Solid Waste Disposal Authority. Councilman Argo, can you introduce this resolution, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Whereas a vacancy currently exists on the Prattville Solid Waste Disposal Authority due to the term expiration of Greg Gillon, and whereas it is the desire of the Prattville City Council to ensure the continuity of the board's operation, now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Prattville, Alabama, that Greg Gillon is hereby reappointed, and said term will expire on July 15, 2014, or until his successor is duly qualified and appointed. Mr. President, I so move.
Moved by Councilman Argo. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Reneger. Any discussion on this resolution? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Chair votes aye, and this resolution is adopted by a vote of seven to zero. Item number 18 is a resolution to appoint Laura Lee Boone to the Historic Prattville Redevelopment Authority. Councilman Bowles, can you introduce this resolution?
Actually, I just want to ask if we could pull this off, please. Make a motion to pull this off the agenda.
Yes, you can do that. Motion to remove this from our agenda by Councilman Bowles. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Striplin. Any discussion on the motion to remove this resolution from our agenda? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Chair votes aye, and this resolution is removed by a vote of seven to zero. Item number 19 is a resolution to set a public hearing for Restaurant Retail Liquor License for Outback Steakhouse of Florida LLC doing business as Outback Steakhouse Number 1271. Councilman Bowles, can you introduce this resolution?
Whereas the City of Prattville adopted ordinance book 97, page 002, on January 21, 1997, for the purpose of setting public hearing to allow public comments for license, including Restaurant Retail Liquor License, and whereas the Outback Steakhouse of Florida LLC, DBA Outback Steakhouse 1271, located at 1899 Sugar Exchange, Prattville, Alabama, 36066, has made application for said license. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Prattville hereby set a public hearing May the 3rd, 2011, at 6:00 PM in the City Council chambers at City Hall for said license application. I so move.
Moved by Councilman Bowles. Is there a second?
Second to motion.
Seconded by Councilman Reneger. Any discussion on this resolution? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Chair votes aye, and this resolution is adopted by a vote of seven to zero. Is there anything to come from the floor tonight?
Yes, Mr. President. I have a resolution to come from the floor. All right, everybody got the copy? May I introduce this resolution?
Please do.
To set a public hearing to declare 329 Janice Street to be a public nuisance and ordering the abatement per Title 11, Chapter 67 of the Code of Alabama 1975 as amended, whereas an abundance of overgrown grass or weeds is injurious to the public health, safety, and general welfare for providing breeding ground and shelter for rats, mice, snakes, mosquitoes, and other vermin, and so forth and so on. I so move.
Moved by Councilman Reneger. The Dean Argo approach. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Bowles. Is there any discussion on this resolution to set a public hearing? All in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Chair votes aye, and this resolution is adopted by a vote of seven to zero. Is there anything else?
Council President, point of order?
Do we have, we suspend the rules on that one?
Yes.
Oh, came from the floor, yep, all right. Bring it back.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Fink to bring it back before us. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilman Bowles. Any discussion on the motion to bring this resolution back before us? All in favor of the motion to bring this back before us signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Chair votes aye, and this resolution is now back before us. It will hold for two weeks unless there's a motion to suspend the rules.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Wood, seconded by Councilman Reneger. Is there any discussion on the motion to suspend the rules? All in favor of the motion to suspend the rule signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Chair votes aye, and the rules are suspended. This resolution is now properly before us. Is there any discussion on this resolution? All in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Chair votes aye, and this resolution is adopted by a vote of seven to zero. Is there anything else to come from the floor? Okay, Mr. Mayor, any closing comments?
No, sir. Just want to thank all the city employees for the hard work that they had, that they've done for us this week, and hard work you guys have done, and also remind everybody about upcoming City Fest. Should have a lot of fun down there, weekend of the 6th and the 7th. I think somebody had a birthday somewhere or another, May 5th or something like that, but I can't remember quite who. Might have been District 3, but have a good weekend, guys.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Striplin?
Thank you. Just briefly express appreciation to all the city employees for their work and their efforts in the recent storms, plural, that they've cleaned debris from the roads and assisted where needed. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Councilman Wood?
No. Thank everybody for attending. Thank you for what you do.
Councilman Argo?
Yes, sir. Thank you. To Chief Brown, and to the members of the Prattville Fire Department, members of the Prattville Police Department, and Chief Huggins, all of the public safety officers of the city. One of the great pleasures that council members have is that we get to hear from people usually about issues or concerns, but occasionally you get a number of calls about exemplary service or things that city employees did above and beyond the call of duty. And those are very enjoyable, to be able to hear someone appreciate the work of the people that you work with. And I want to tell everyone again how much I appreciate the exemplary work that they have done, not only during the storms recently, but the work that you do every single day that people don't have an opportunity to see what you do, just the little things that you do to keep us safe. Thank you for everything that you do. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Argo. Councilman Reneger?
Just echo what my fellow council members have said. Kudos to all departments, particularly to the department heads.
Councilman Bowles?
Yes, I want to join in. Everybody did extremely well over the last weekend with everything going on, and I know I was reading the city Facebook page, I believe it was, where somebody was talking about the policeman helping out more than any other community they have ever lived in, and that is very true. That goes straight to the fire department, all the way across the board, to everybody that we deal with. I've even had a situation personally with the sanitation where I asked to do one thing, not as a council member but as a citizen, and they were on it just like that, and it's just a pleasure working with them. So thank you all.
Councilman Fink?
Sure. I'm actually amazed. It got to me, and I've got something to say that somebody else hasn't said yet, and I'd like to wish all of our city employees, as well as just the citizens of Prattville, a very happy Easter this Sunday coming up, and God bless each and every one of you.
Thank you, Councilman Fink. And just a couple of comments. According to the resolution or ordinance on council procedures, next month we start with a finance report at the second meeting of each month, so we look forward to that. And the other thing I wanted to say to the mayor and perhaps others is a fundraiser for our city coffers might be for the city to purchase one of these dunking booths and move you around from subdivision to subdivision and see how much money we could raise, and I can guarantee you on my circle we would turn out. So, anyway, I do also appreciate the work the mayor's doing, fellow councilmen. I feel like, you know, we're not out of the woods yet by any means, but we certainly have started to move in that direction, and I just appreciate everybody's hard work and perseverance, and particularly, I'm going to echo too, because I think you can't say it often enough, how much the city employees mean to us and to the citizens of this community. So with that, can I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Reneger. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Bowles. All in favor, aye.
Aye.